To all the people that we support to support the city, we do a wonderful job. And today we're going to talk about the policy. Today, you know, we don't have Democrat, Republican, or Taiwan Green Party or Blue Party. We have all the citizens, everybody here. We are only for one thing. We want to see the city run by the good people. Today, all the people here, you're all good people. No bad people here. We want to get back our city. We want to see the Seattle be run and get back our beautiful city again. And I'm so happy that everyone will be here. We want to sit and talk and have fun, okay? The food will be coming any moment here. So right now, if I can have all the number one to six history representatives, and also Jesse Kent's son, everyone, they listen and take a picture with the beautiful son, the Iron Man. And thank you so much, Tony, for your contribution and watching this international live dance that are coming through to this event. Thank you for coming here today.
What I want to talk about is cooperation and working together towards the common goals. We have not always found the city of Seattle easy to work with. Sometimes, yes, sometimes no. I was talking to Jimmy Maddox, who's a variant, about who we know to call on the Seattle City Council. And we know some people are going to talk to us, some people are going to help us, others have their own agenda and aren't going to be interested in working together to cooperate. The reason I love living in Shoreline and being part of Shoreline's government is that we all get along, we respect each other, we want common things. We disagree on the details, but we can always manage the work towards a common goal. I look forward to hearing from the Seattle City Council campus tonight because I'm hoping that's the folks there around that same cooperative attitude. Finding the path through the middle is always better than failing on the extremes. So I actually am running for reelection this year, but I'm running on a post, so I'm going to be able to win this one. And I am delighted to stop talking now and turn my time to folks who need to persuade you that they're the ones who are.
I'm just going to make a brief story. How many people live in King County here? Raise your hand. How many of you at the airport? Raise your hand. How many order packages for members? Raise your hand. How many want to enjoy paying tax on your home? How come nobody raised their hand? Okay, this year alone, for Seattle Commission, it's time to tax levy any single house in King County 2023 for $83 billion. Did you know about the tax on your home? So when you pay tax for the airport, you're buying a plane ticket or paying a D-4, you pay more for your certificate for your unburdened, you pay more for a parking there, and you also actually pay more your packages because of the trucking company paying more rent. Okay? I'm a retired banker, I watch numbers. I did not like the $800 million cost overruns for the airport terminal expenses. Most people did not know about that. It's affecting all of us in every single way for the last eight years and nobody is willing to understand the details. It's time for us to step up, to learn about issues in the port, get the transparency, accountability back to the port, then we can wash our money, $1 billion revenue coming down from the top all the way to the bottom, to be distributed to all the community and for all the social responsibility we have in this country. So out of the 1.44 million registered voter, I'm pleased to receive 97,584 votes. So with that, I'm moving forward in the general election. I hope to have your support, then I can put in my time to walk with. Thank you.
Twenty years, and for me, I see it every day. The public safety situation is where Bellevue succeeds or fails. It's absolutely got to be our top priority. We've got to close the police staffing gap, we've got to cement, and I don't want to throw shade at Seattle too much here since I'm not in a Bellevue-only forum, but I do here at the door more often than anything else. Whatever's happening in Seattle, we need to find a way to avoid some of those public safety challenges that haven't always gone away in the olden days. And so that's why I've been able to be very comfortable about closing the police staffing gap. That's why Bellevue Police Office Guild has chosen to endorse me. That's why half of Bellevue City Council has chosen to endorse me, including Jared Newenhouse, Governor Roberts, and Conrad Lee. And I'm also a big champion of the economy and our business sector in Bellevue. That's why the Decide Business Alliance has also chosen to come onboard. And I will tell you that I am running against an incumbent, and that is very unusual for all these organizations, as well as several other business organizations, to endorse me. And I think that's because the time has come for a change in Bellevue, and I am a change. And I'm going to leave it there. And I'd love to talk more with any of you activists in Bellevue or just want Bellevue to be that shining light in the King County region that showed the way. Thank you for your time.
Places and new places. As you, as you rightly say, I had the most challenging job that also brings me a solid skill set to be a librarian because I don't choose who I work with. I have been working with people from all parts of life. And I have trained my part of working with people from grandparents, parents, students, especially throughout the pandemic, you name it. So by the way, I've been in this country for almost 25 years. And this will be my 25 year in my profession as a librarian. Eighteen years with Bellevue School this way. I lived in Newcastle for five years. And as a community event organizer, and I'm on the council of Newcastle, Arts Council, and also I'm VP of Friends of Newcastle Library. So my goal is to bring people together, through the pandemic. Most people were isolated, and I orchestrated first ever Newcastle渡劫cambion with the established 600 people, 600 constituents. At the event, people asked me, "Sam, you should learn." You know, before I didn't like to run in the city council, even before the pandemic, people asked me, "Please learn." I said, "Well, I just want to work as a people person." But throughout this pandemic, it took me a week to finally decide I want to run. Based on research, as a woman, first generation immigrant, people of color, and just like working before in this country, my dream was to work in a division for a super organization, for a better job, better life, and build my family. But through the pandemic, I see it's essential to leadership, especially in my city. Maybe you haven't heard, in Newcastle, we have the biggest Asian population, much bigger than the nearby cities, about 36% Asian population in the city of Newcastle. We also have such a history of Asian immigrants who dedicated in our city through the whole mining history, also contributed greatly for the booming economy of Seattle, City of Seattle. So my goal is to bring people together as a team for a brighter Newcastle, for our shared brighter future. I just said my primary, I want my primary leading role back. I'm heading to general election, and also I was very shy, used to be so shy to ask money, especially among my friends. But I'm a lifelong learner. I studied computer science while I was in this country. And then I started financial planning, and then human relations. And then being an educator, I pursued master's education. And I was so fortunate to be selected by Stanford University to represent the educator, to complete their leadership training, gather certificate. So I'm ready to run. I also took a course, how to ask for money. So I'm using that to practice, everyone, you know? I'm a real gold account, every donation is crucial. If you, I'm so grateful for all of you who already donated my campaign and for all of you who donated twice for my general election, thank you, November 7. I'm going to be forever grateful. If you could keep you supporting me, I'm going to support this crucial. I appreciate your support. Please visit my campaign, my site, thex.org, and my email address, x.org, alexandrogolfer@gmail.com. Thank you so much, and also feel the need for all the candidates. Thank you.
Dad of three, Air Force veteran, I'm an attorney, I'm a community safety advocate. I have to to all the people from immigrant refugee communities in this room. I want you to know, I see you and I share your struggles. I'm the proud son of a Nigerian immigrant. And I'm grateful for you today, firstly professionally, also someone who has overcome the foster care system to rise quickly in the military ranks and achieve success now, gratefully, as a lawyer and a policy advocate in our community. I'm running to make sure the city is a safe place in the community and affordable of a place for the community, and in the process, doing better for our unhoused neighbors. All three of those things. Not enough time in two minutes to sort of, you know, go deep on any of those. But I will say, with respect to public safety, I'm here to make sure we hire more good, honest police in parallel, and, and make sure we stand up civilian-led responses to respond to certain mental behavior in home crisis situations. I'm here to collaborate across differences, find common ground, and all the needed stuff done. Rather than sow seeds of discord and division, I build my personal life and my professional career, folks. I'm working towards that common goal, finding areas of, finding areas of all that. I was talking to this gentleman right back here in the back of the room, Leon, Brother Leon. And Leon works for the homeowners union. And we talked, I was able to hear a little bit of his concerns about what they want. And they're holding back the interest with a lot of the builders that are going to be building funding needs. And we talked a little bit about how I can potentially help. But my, but my bottom line here is this, folks. I'm here to center progressive values of a strong Democrat. I make no apologies about it. Matter of fact, I'm the only one in this race that has been endorsed by our local Democratic Party, the 34th District Council. So progressive values and a healthy, healthy dose of common sense. Common sense, folks. And I've talked to 7,000 people at their homes, at their own doors. People are the most candid when you're in their face, in their own doors. And I've heard the concerns over this, those three months I mentioned earlier, public safety, homelessness, affordability. And for people who think that the city has lost its direction, and I agree. I want you to know, just like I tell everyone at the doors, hell is on the way. Hell is on the way. So thank you, Rob Sato, for turning your support.
I must say that the reason I might have a foreign immigrant came from a report in the mainland in search of opportunities. And in turn, I came to Seattle for opportunity as well about 22 years ago. The Seattle that I came to 22 years ago is not the Seattle that is today. Mainly because when I came to Seattle 12 years ago, it was safe. And it was beautiful, and it was a great place. I thought I could start and raise a family. And I did stay, and I am raising a family. And I have two girls that are in high school. And sadly, in the fall, there was a school shooting, which is actually propelled me to get into this race. Once the incumbent was asked, you just decided, I'm not running here, then I thought, no, I can't sit around and watch this happening in Seattle any longer. I need to jump in and try to do, into this race and try to do something about this. I have 30 years of public service under my belt. I worked for, when I first moved here, the ACL, Union Royal Rights Education of the East and Middle Native Land Communities. I worked for two administrations. I worked for the former Dofa administration. I'm now the Yerelaw Administration in the Office for Arts and Culture. And I have a law degree. And I really want to work together with other colleagues on the city council to work with them here to get some positive change happen in Seattle. Because we can't do it alone, we have to do it together. And sadly, many on the city council are not working together nowhere in the area to actually bring a positive change to Seattle. And on the public safety front, Rob said we need more police officers. We also need to find opportunities to recruit more officers. So we need to work on that. We need to also be supporting our small and big businesses in Seattle because we know that they bring jobs to Seattle. And I know the D-4 on the university, we have a lot of small businesses are suffering right now because of a lot of public, because of public safety issues. So we need to support our businesses, and we need to make sure our businesses don't leave Seattle because if they leave, they'll take jobs, transfer needed jobs. So that's just a little bit about me. I want to keep this for two minutes because I know there are other candidates here. I'm happy to talk to any of you in more depth about these and other issues based in the district. And again, D-4, Marissa, timely, thank you for listening.
Director of the Fremont Chamber of Commerce. But before that, I owned a Red Door for 20 years. It was a hospitality, it was a bar and restaurant in my community. You're going to hear the same issues talked about by each one of us up here. When we're knocking on doors, we're hearing about public safety, we're hearing about the homeless crisis, and we're hearing about housing and income inequality. But really, for me, it all grounds in public safety. I spent over two decades working with the North Precinct Advisory Council. I'm now going president of that organization. And besides us needing to hire more police officers, we have to rebuild and change the relationship that we have with our law enforcement officers and all those agencies. They are asking for our help, they need our help. Because without us all working together, we're not going to get our way through this. We are in a crisis. I do outreach to some of the unhoused neighbors in my community. Many of them need our services. But on those same block fronts, when there are people who are unhoused, there is typically someone there who is not in crisis, but who is selling this poison into our community called fentanyl. And we need to be dedicated and going after those people who are bringing that poison into our communities. And I wish that there were other subjects that I could talk about and put energy into, like focus on. But the reality is, if we are not solving that basic issue, then we're not going to be able to do all the other missions. Performative and divisive. We need to be collaborative. I hope that I get to work with all of these wonderful people down who are up here. We need to be collaborative and pragmatic in our decisions and understand that the budget in which we are working with is enough money for right now. And before we ask for more money, we actually have to make sure that the resources that we are spending, we're spending them wisely. Having run a business for over two decades, you know what it means when you have to make people, they make tough decisions. And I feel like the city just looks at you as an ATM, and they don't look at you as a constituent. I want to change that. Once again, many thanks, man. I really appreciate everyone being here. I would love your support.
I'm so proud to be a child from South Seattle. I grew up in Chinatown, I grew up in Hill, and now live in New York. And so my mom is here, and my mom. My mom has taught me so many great values. She always say back to me, protect the community and help one another, to look out for one another. And so at least some major issues we have received last year, four years, public safety in Chinatown, and also what we're seeing in Chinatown, mental microplasm, what we're seeing for a better city. We have issues regarding being heard. Last year, with the impact, we wanted to expand the shelter, and we had a lot of public safety concerns. And none of our individuals came out for us. We were in a community crisis, and no one came out to listen, to listen to us. And so we protested, Eric and me, for about a month and a half, and they then listened. This proves that we are strong together and that we can unite despite all our differences and be able to get things done. Also, in the last couple of years, I started a group called Community Watch. We go out, we make sure all the residents, all the residents, our seniors are okay, we can see your self-defense. We will deliver lives for senior, for unhoused residents. We believe we connect our unhoused residents' resources that they will be able to go inside and we develop trust that they will de-escalate effectively. And so we need to be heard, we need to unite, we need to be strong. There's about 30% Asian Americans that live in my district. Yes, we all don't vote. Look at San Francisco, we see how powerful they are. They can recall all the issues, so our individuals will listen to us. We need to hear that, here needs to be a power, needs to be a force, so that people will listen to us and make all of the issues that we're not pleasing in Chinatown, and the Chinatown district, and all of Seattle. And so if you have any questions, I'm willing to take them. But please, all the candidates here are amazing, all endorsed by the Seattle Times, and they're all really great friends. And so please, support us and vote for us. It looks like it's vote time on the voting dot com. And elections are in November, but the turnout so far has been really low. It's about 30%, only 18,000 voted in my district, but there are about 6,000 to 7,000 voters. 5,000 people did not vote, also it's not for grabs. It's like we compete, I already made some comments, so we can do it. I think we could win this, we need to change Seattle together for the better. Thank you.
So my name is Jim Malzner. I'm running for Seattle City Council District 3. A third-generation Seattleite, I was born in the destroyed central district neighborhood. I facilitate the same work I remember the past since 1947. Turned it to a triplex, back into a house, but my neighborhood got way more abnormal. I come from a very long line of public servants. My dad worked at Seattle Parks 35 years, mother, Keen China House in the Bronx, 30-plus years. And I had a grandmother who sat on our school fort here in Seattle, Washington, for a long time during desegregation. And over the last 39 years, I've seen how public policy has really impacted our community and the people in this very room that have fallen through those gaps. And so what we're running on, number one, is public safety. We're going to make sure that, number one, that we have enough police officers to lower our response times, to respond to the things that are going on in our neighborhood. We're also going to ensure that our youth has something to do as well, right? So it's a two-fold program, police, we're going to make sure that our youth has something to do. It's going to be this holistic approach. It includes police fire and team. The second thing, so our response to homelessness has been really quite embarrassing. You've heard that around here. We've got to do a better job of telling to our homelessness and the people that are experiencing that. The third piece is our small business. Look, I'm a small business owner and a non-opuligator. I know a lot of businesses during COVID-19 that were absolutely ravaged during the pandemic. And they're now trying to climb back out of that. We have always been a city, and it's always embraced small businesses, from the small coffee shops, and the daycares, to all the different businesses that I remember growing up as a kid, Chuck E. Cheese, I don't know if you all remember that. But all these small businesses, right, that was Seattle. And so we have to be active, figuring out how we do grants and loans and public safety with that. I know a lot of small businesses are funding their own private security. That is ridiculous. The third piece also is our housing. I want to be the champion of middle housing. I told you, I live in the triplex. We can have more of those, especially in our community, to be able to add to the housing crisis that's going on. Also, our infrastructure. I want to give back to the fundamental infrastructure of our city, right? So our parks, our community centers, our roads, hot holes, the unsexy stuff that City Council does not want to touch right now, that we, that affects your daily lives. So on Council, it'd be someone who listens, like Sam Smith West. He picked up his own office phone to listen to people. I'm also going to make sure that we work across lines. And to me, there's no progressive, non-progressive, centrist, I've been called a centrist, all these different things. We're just Seattleites, wanting to make the city better. The third thing, we're going to make sure that we work with the mayor's office, right? That's something that we don't hear a lot. We want to work with the mayor's office and work with the council. So looking forward to answering questions and making Seattle a home again. I hear that all the time. I want Seattle to feel like a home, feels like a city. We want Seattle to feel like a home. Really happy to be here and make you all part of your time. I'm Joy Mullinsburg, running for Seattle City Council District 3.
This is a very important situation. Consider. Okay, a stepchild to the city of Seattle. And we are no longer going to be a stepchild. We need a strong, charismatic advocate to just survive. And that is who I'm going to be when I get elected to the council. I'm a former judge, I'm a wife who's small sister, and I have three adult children, all in the Seattle way and sports. You all do very well in this world. I love Seattle. I know into this race, we've lost our faith. We need to restore our public safety, and we need to do that in ways that people are in a shape to ask for help. We need to offer ways to address our homelessness problem, to work with people who are struggling with transportation, people who have mental health issues. Those are critical issues to resolve in our public safety. We also have to learn how we can increase our housing availability so that my children and your children, and seniors, and residents in our workforce, everybody who lives in Seattle, comes home to afford to live in Seattle. And lastly, we need to continue to be a bright and friendly for our small businesses, the individual businesses, and our large businesses. So the last thing I want to say is that too much of the current council refuses to listen to the voices of you, the citizen. And when I'm in council, I'm going to listen to you. I'm not afraid to listen to many different voices, and I'm not afraid to stand up and make tough decisions when they might seem unpopular with the so-called progressive system. We need to bring our city back to the home of our citizens. And thank you so much for your support. I'm participating.
I have worked fairly well with social mechanics, their food was amazing. So thank you all so much for coming out here. Bob gave a decision to come to Seattle, at first when he was serving in the Navy. And he was serving in naval intelligence, he was given the option when his score was pointing down in Moscow, to go between Norfolk and Bremerton. He chose Bremerton. This happened to be where he met the woman who would become his wife, Sarah Dye. When he retired after Navy and coming to town, they decided that they were going to come back to Seattle. She's a local girl, she worked in Bremerton. And this is where this is clear, they made this issue sort of happen. Bob, during this time, has served on the Pan Community Council. He served there 14 years. He's also still currently serving as whoever of the West Preise Advisory Council. Public safety is a subject that is dear to his heart. He's gone on private runs, he's working closely with West Precinct, having seen Stram. He knows that for succeeding in public safety, we have to succeed in helping others. There are two sides of the same fork. In addition, plus to work on all the problem homelessness. We're a lot about homelessness tonight, you know, because there's going to be no one-size-fits-all solution for the problem of homelessness. We need to get our homeless neighbors off of those streets. That is so unsafe.
We are safe. And you can walk on the street without worrying, even in the midnight. And I have been living in a wicked deal. However, recently, we cannot even walk in the daytime. In Chinatown and downtown, we see those who stole the goods from all different stores openly exchanging their products. And we have offered a gift, $1 for a bigger pack of chicken. Say, you can, you can have this fresh meat, $1. And a few nights ago, when I was in downtown Seattle, I saw tall police officers stood in line half a block away from a bigger pile of those exchanging food and people there. I said to them, "Sir, they are criminals. I'm going to arrest them, make our city safer." Guess what he said? He said, "Even if we risked our lives to arrest them, they would not be prosecuted." Isn't that sad? Our city is destroyed by this, and for a lifetime waiting, city under. I wish anyone of a way, when, anyone of your way, would change the city. I wish every one of you, everybody like this, that is ready to make Seattle look better, not a competitor, not unsafe, the city. Thank you for your work to join the fight and take back Seattle. Thank you, everybody.
How many, how many voters? Four years, nobody knew my role, that's very little. And now it's, it's starting to come back. But I say, I don't know if you have come to Seattle or if you're. I always thought you'd stay here, that you'll be safer. But Seattle's still a lot of place to come. So I know many ways that you can let the tourism feel safe in coming to Seattle. Because two thousand, two thousand and twenty-six, this whole cat is coming. I don't know if you are ready or not, because I have a pack of people there.
So, I'm taking you on a more specific action plans for the, and it's, I wrote out two of them?
My assistant, Sarah Lightfoot, was not here. She is in Shoreline, District Five, I think, or six.
District Five or six? So I was in Shoreline, with one of the Shoreline districts that responded, specific action plans for the lifestyle crisis.
Those are those conversations. We need to, first and foremost, we need to support our city attorney to be able to prosecute those folks. So currently, the council voted against that proposal, and so we need to show some work there. We need to support the police officers, so that they know when they do those drug busts, that the license will be prosecuted, that those people will spend some time there. So, it goes all the way up the system. And it is really harrowing, because this drug can last twenty to forty minutes and costs one hundred dollars. So we are, we're really in a tight spot. But it doesn't mean that we can't do more, and that we have to.
So how are the social workers that are down there supposedly addressing the issue, right? With the drug users and such? What are they able to do?
It depends on the group that's doing the outreach. There is this term, "Do No Harm," where all they're gonna do is give them, whether it's some water, some calories, you know, just outreach, tell them about services that are available. I think that term is not true, because those folks who are in this, they are being harmed, or we're allowing them to live in this, this cycle of pain and suffering. And at the same time, whether it's in a residential neighborhood